Hello, folks. How we doing? October 15th. It's just after 7:00 PM on the zoning board of appeals. So, welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming. First cases of discussion in regards to case number 18-0924, Brook Street. So, I read your letter and I forget the exact date. Ramona's not here, but we just... When were you here? A month or so ago, a month and a half?
A while ago.
More like June.
Couple of months?
A couple of months.
Was it? Okay. So, we had discussions with...
June 6th.
Thank you. So, we had discussions with the client in regards to the circumstances surrounding the situation. We basically presented it to him that he's more than welcome to start the process over again if he wants to. We certainly will entertain your discussion because you asked us to, but I'm gonna ask you, if possible, to keep it to new discussion, if possible. But I know you do have... You did get a copy of the minutes of the last meeting?
Yes.
So, you're aware of the discussion that took place?
Yes.
All right. Your floor is yours for the moment.
So, when I looked at this situation, it's readily apparent that there's a couple of things going on, one of them being kind of a trust issue. And so, obviously, we need to get by that and hopefully into new territory. And the method that I saw as being a reasonable one to perhaps go down is offering to put a deed restriction on the property because the trust issue seems to arise out of, you know, is this gonna be used as a single-family residence?
Let me interrupt you for one second. It's not a trust issue.
Yeah.
Okay, it's a discrepancy issue.
Yeah.
Okay, there was discrepancies in the plans after the fact of the hearing. It's not that we don't trust your client, okay? It's not that we don't like your client. We don't even know.
Oh, God.
Okay, it's the issue of... It's a discrepancy issue that we came up. This is not what we agreed to. This is not what we approved.
Right.
So, it's definitely not a trust issue.
Right.
It's just it's a discrepancy issue that we came up to the conclusion that we would move forward by saying, "If you want to come back in and start over again," because it's nothing in comparison to what we agreed upon in the first place. So, knowing that, you can move forward, please.
Sure. So, anyway, in any event, my impression was that part of this discrepancy issue arose out of, you know, was this... Was there some intent to use this as a single-family, like a residential type of use, which there isn't. But yet, he does want to have a bathroom because it's 300 feet separation between the buildings. And if he's in there, he's working, he's doing whatever. It's winter, you know. If you're at your neighbor's house, you really don't want to have to go home to go to the bathroom. And that's kind of the analogy that I'm coming up with. So, the major point of the discussion is, if that type of scenario were offered up and we could work with town council to come up with something that looked good and was tight enough, is that something that would assist in getting to the result that he's looking for, which is, I think, basically two things. To be able to have a bathroom in there and hopefully bring up utilities directly from the street because to bring them from his residence over around the ledge, which was the reason for the variance to begin with, seems like a lot more costly than to bring them directly from the street to the property. And as I understand it, the DPW is basically saying, unless you have a separate address, we don't want to allow direct access. So, we've got kind of a little bit of a puzzle here. I'm trying to see what we can do to work through that and come up with...
Mr. Chair, has the DPW... Has the DPW... May I may... Has the DPW actually said you can't bring utilities off the street unless there's an address? Or do you assume that?
That's what's been reported as the discussion.
And do they say why?
Chairman?
He...
You have a chance. Go ahead.
Yeah, no problem.
Go ahead.
Full disclosure, I didn't sit on the initial hearing.
Okay.
Okay, but from what I've read up on it, and I was here for the last discussion, from what I've read up on it, what happened, what was added in after the fact was virtually nothing that we had discussed in the... Or the board at the time discussed in regards to the plans. You know, there was a bathroom added in. The sewer pipe... The sewer pipe, I don't even... I'm not sure if it was discussed or not off the top of my head. Okay, but the bathroom was never in the plan. The new address was certainly never in the plan. And I can speak for the board that it never would have been approved had it been. That's where the discrepancy comes from. There's the situation that arose after the fact, okay, from what had been agreed upon. So, I mean, I'll allow other people to add it to that if you wish. Please, Mr. Ram.
Mr. Chairman, I think the answer is very simple. Very simple. We're a public board. We conduct the public's business in public. There was an application here to add a garage... A third story to the garage. There was no mention in the application of a bathroom. There was no discussion of a bathroom at the hearing. As you point out, there was no mention of a bathroom in the decision, and the matter was closed. I think the only possible way that this can be done, as we said at the June discussion, is for the applicant to start again. Otherwise, what's going to be... The public perception is going to be that the board publicly did something, but thereafter, they had some kind of a private sidebar meeting and talked about it and came up with some agreement as to which there was absolutely no notice to the public as to what was being granted by way of relief. I don't think this falls under the category of a minor modification. I mean, the law on modification is quite clear. I'm looking at the Mass Land Use and Planning Law book, and it says that, yeah, "The modification of a decision of an administrative appeal may occur where the initial decision contained clerical errors or omissions." The law is clear that the board has the inherent power, without a further hearing, to correct an inadvertent or clerical error in its decision so that the record reflects its true intention." That's not what we're talking about here. They're trying to add some substantive relief that was never asked for, never discussed, never allowed. I don't see that there's any possibility, without looking entirely foolish to the public, that we say anything but... And it's unfortunate because we said essentially this last June. I recall two or three of us did, including the chair. And unfortunately, three or four months has elapsed during which the whole thing probably could have been resolved if they started then. But they did not take that advice and came back. And as far as I'm concerned, they get the same advice now.
I gotta be honest with you.
Let's take the minor modification off the table. Just throwing that out there.
Correct, but I gotta tell you, I feel honestly that we bend over backwards to try to accommodate people for what they're looking for. Everything that's within reason. I'm not even gonna go on record and say that this isn't within reason. But again, because of what took place prior to your arrival and the discrepancies and the possible miscommunications, not on our part, okay, but regardless of possible miscommunication, I think the only alternative is to do what we suggested the last time. I don't think we're gonna get around that.
Which is fine. But while we're here discussing, I mean, I've heard you guys say that, you know, if it had been presented with a bathroom, which is what this gentleman would like to have, it would not have been allowed. I understand part of the reason for that is potentially because you guys don't want it to end up being a backdoor residential property. And I get that. My question to you folks is, would you see value in having a deed restriction? Is that even... Is it worth coming back to you guys? I'm just trying to get a read on the board, if you're willing to do that. If you're not willing to do that, just let me know. I'm not trying to do anything under the table or underhanded. I'm just trying to find out.
No one thinks so. I honestly, I'm not sure I'd be... I'd be comfortable giving you an answer on that tonight, to be frank. I'd have to see it. I'd have... You know, I'd have to go with...
I've never given an advisory opinion in 40 years. I'm not gonna start now.
I'm looking for an advisory. In any event, I'm just trying to get a little bit of a...
It's always worth it. It's always worth a try. I can't guarantee what's gonna take place. I mean, obviously, we'd have to see the new set of plans. We'd have to go over the parameters. Other than that, I'm... You know, that's all I can tell you. I appreciate your effort. I appreciate your time. And I want to definitely... You know, I'd like to see everybody... I'd like to give everybody everything. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yes, you know, I mean, I'm all for better of people's profits. It's just the issue is, you know, we have to protect ourselves first and foremost, as you're aware.
Understood. That's why I sent the letter and came in to have a public hearing.
And I know it's costly. I know it's costly. I get that.
Public discussion.
You know what I mean? But just unfortunately, that's just the way it's gonna be.
Okay.
All right.
Well, appreciate your time.
We do too.
And...
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, please.
All right, next up is 331 Washington Street, please. Yeah. He should be right there. Hi, how are you?
Good one.
Give me one second. We're just waiting. One more member's coming in. I actually should have... Excuse me, I should have noted for the record that John Perry did not sit on the last hearing because he had done some work on the property that was in question. So, he had excused himself from the hearing, which is why we went with a four-person board. I should have done that prior to the hearing, to the discussion ending. So, I apologize for that. Nevertheless, he's now with us. The board's whole much better off.
Let's begin.
Et cetera, et cetera. So, 331 Washington Street is asking for an application. Request a special permit under section 5.4.4 of the zoning bylaw to allow the construction of a single-story 20-foot-by-14-foot family room with bathroom and an attached 20-foot-by-14-foot deck. The basement to the family room would be a cement crawl space foundation. The attached deck with stairs from the deck to the ground will sit four feet off the ground. The request includes any additional relief the ZBA may determine to be appropriate. For starters, do you have the notification and the affidavit, please?
I do. Thank you.
All right, I have the affidavit. If you could just tell me...
September 12th and September 19th?
Yes, that's what I'm looking for. 12th and 19th, if you could, please. Mr. Mulderhill and Mr. Murphy, please.
September 12th, Mr. Chairman.
September 19th, Mr. Chairman.
All right, great. Thank you. Okay, and if you just want to introduce yourselves for the record, then you can have the floor.
My name's Marty Kenny and my wife, Joanne.
Hi.
Nice to have you.
And we've lived in Norwood for 39 years. We've been in our current residence for the past 35 years. And we're at the age where you think stop thinking about where you want to spend the rest of your life. You know, you're gonna move somewhere else, downsize. And we're happy to say that we're very happy in our current residence. The thing that we don't have, though, is we don't have a bathroom on the first floor. So, that's the primary reason we're really looking for an addition at this point. So, it would be the bathroom for your family room. Hook up for a washer dryer. And then the deck off of that. So, I think that's... I mean, that's really why we're here before you tonight. And it's a small lot that we live on all around, so...
Just refresh my memory, if you would. What is the reason? Is it because of the... Is it an existing nonconformity because of the side yards?
It's an existing nonconformity on the side, but going back now, it would be the setback in the rear.
Okay, so it's 12 and a half feet on the side currently, which would leave you two and a half feet short.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and the additional is...
It doesn't add anything on the sides. It stays within that...
And you have the parameter in the back?
In the back. We're supposed to have 30 feet, I guess. But it would leave 12 feet instead of 30. I mean, we didn't try to make it too big. We just wanted it big enough to be able to have first-floor living.
Okay.
And the interesting thing about that, too, is on the side, there's a house, you know, right next to us on the side. The back, it's probably 75 yards away, the existing house, not the property. So, we're close to the line.
I saw a couple of places. Yours is... If you're facing your house, yours has got the fence... Is the backyard fenced in?
Yes.
Is there a white fence on the side there?
Yes. Okay.
So, that's the property line, or is that just...
Pretty much.
The property line that goes down towards your neighbor there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Within a few inches.
Okay, sure. All right, any questions from the board on this, please?
No, Mr. Chairman. I'm familiar with the property. It's pretty self-explanatory.
No questions?
No.
Straightforward. Sire?
I think there's a problem. It looks as though there is currently, from the existing house to the back, 32 feet. With this addition, it would only be 12 feet, which creates a new nonconformity.
Rear yard?
Yeah. Which unfortunately, I think, gets us involved in the infamous Dedrick case in the zoning board of Chatham, where they came to the conclusion that even with respect to one- and two-family houses, the court says that, like the land court judge, "We construe the provisions of the first and second sentences of six together to allow extension of existing nonconformities upon a showing of no substantial detriment, but to require a variance for the creation of any new nonconformity." It looks like that's what we have. A brand-new nonconformity. I did some research to try to see if by any chance there was some way out of this, whether the Dedrick case might have either been overruled or remanded or in some fashion changed. I did find a 2018 case in Brookline that I first thought was gonna help the situation, but after 15 pages of opinions and 13 notes, they finally get to the point to say, "We need not address the issue presented in Dedrick." It didn't change Dedrick. As far as I know, Dedrick is still good law. We've run into this before here, between some of these cases, Jack, where they, you know, unfortunately, it creates a new nonconformity. And the problem with creating the new nonconformity and requiring a variance is that the, as we all know, the requirements for obtaining a variance are considerably more strict than those for special permit. And unfortunately, I don't see that there's much going on here by way of a hardship. Oddly enough, we have another case coming on later on Sunnyside, where awfully enough, if they needed to, the people at Sunnyside probably could get a variance. They didn't ask for one, and they may not, in fact, need one. But they could probably get one because the sideline of their property is at a big angle. So, they could probably argue the shape gave them a variance. But that's a whole 'nother matter. But I don't see anything in this case other than the fact of a straight rectangular lot and a rectangular addition that creates a new nonconformity. I honestly don't know where to go with that, other than to say you need a variance. And there certainly doesn't appear to be any, you know, shaped soil or topography-related hardship. I looked at the property. It looked like it had a very big backyard, but I gather some of it must be a neighbor in back. There's a fence across the back. Is that the border? Yes, that's what I thought it was. And unfortunately, with the board of there, you just don't have a whole lot of land to work with.
We have no understanding of that.
I don't know what the answer is. I don't see how you would allow a variance without... I mean, sometimes we'll have a case where, you know, the variance may not... The hardship may not necessarily be the reason that there's a problem, but if we can find something with the shaped soil and topography, we've, as you know, from history, we've hung our hat on it, even though it's been a little, you know, iffy. But I don't see anything yet hanging our hat on it. I'd like to find something, but... And I was hoping that the Brookline case was going to either amend or overturn this case, but it didn't. So, I don't know where we are, except we're in some difficulty, I think.
So, you're saying, based upon the Dedrick case, you're saying that it's the nonconforming nature has to be the same. It has to be increased. So, in other words, it would have to be the side yard one that was increased?
Oh, yeah, you could increase... Yeah, exactly. You could increase the nonconformity solely on the basis of a special permit. And I think Mark Barrow... Our man with his Bible, Mark Barrow... I don't even pronounce his name. Can you pronounce his name?
Bobowski.
Yeah, good work. Bobowski doesn't like this Dedrick case. And I don't like it much either because he thought that what was intended originally by the statute was to treat all one- and two-family houses differently and only require the special permit. But... And there was a Gale case that preceded this that seemed to say that, but Dedrick changed it with respect to not extensions, but the creation of a new nonconformity. I mean, it's almost counterintuitive. I mean, if they... If they had had a situation where, instead of having 32 feet to the back, they had 28 feet, so that they didn't comply, they could probably extend it because all they'd be doing would be extending a nonconforming lease. But the counterintuitive part is they comply, and so they're in worse shape than they would be if they didn't comply. But I think the only answer to that, that I've ever seen, is that the law frowns on the creation of new nonconformities. And so, I don't know. I don't know what we can do with the case. It's a problem.
So, that means you can only go back... So, they really can only... Because they could increase the nonconformity to the side, but you could only go two feet back?
Right, right. And if they had... Yeah, exactly. And that obviously does them no good. I mean, if they had 28 feet instead of 32, it'd be all right, probably. But the odd thing is with... We ran into this with a couple of other cases. I think one of them was one of the Selectman's sons. I think we ran into a problem with that on the case. It was one way with Allen's son that came in. And I remember Harry Spence picked it up at that case. He was sitting there. I said, "Wait a minute, you know. I think you need a variance." And he was right. So, I don't know.
Do you understand that? You understand what Counsel O'Reilly is saying?
Oh, it's...
Understand what he's saying.
Look, you know, I...
Did you speak with Mr. Schubert at the building department? And who'd you speak with, anybody over there? Pride of your application, making the application. How did you find out that you were coming in with special permit?
The inspector.
Mark? Yeah, Mark Schubert.
Yeah.
So, Mark advised you to go for a special permit?
Yes.
Okay. So, your Counsel O'Reilly is, you know, quite often correct, although sometimes he doesn't admit he's wrong, but sometimes he is wrong. But this time, I unfortunately have to agree with him.
That's more than Dedrick.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it wasn't Mark. It was Matt Walsh.
Matt Walsh.
Oh, okay, it was Matt, yeah.
I will say this, the variance probably is the way to go here, but it is a higher bar to reach as far as the criteria that would allow us to approve it. We have approved something... Some similar applications to this in the past. And we've, you know, held our nose by doing it because you have to meet certain hardships in order to obtain a variance.
And what are those hardships?
Anything out to the side of the...
The shape of the lot, the topography of the lot, the soil conditions of the lot, like if you ought to grant it outcropping, if you had a, you know, oblong lot or something that was really weird.
Is the case a boulder? There's a boulder in the middle of it?
Yeah, something we could really just, you know... But the kicker here is that, obviously, you've been in town for decades, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And you want to stay here. So, I, for one, would probably go the route of a variance and reapply. And...
What's the size of the whole lot? You know, I mean, square feet?
Six thousand 605.
Yeah, because it's a pre-existing nonconforming...
It does create... It is a pre-existing nonconformity.
Yeah, so, you know, again, it's something that would give us a little path to grant because we want to grant. The other people that we want to say yes to. But as Mr. Riley said very often in my 20-plus years, we're just not a granting authority board. We have a book of laws that we have to adhere to. And if it was, then it's no problem.
So, even though nobody would object, it's law. It's a law.
That's the hamstringing. You know what I mean?
Actually, that's one of the reasons that they enacted the strict variance conditions. When you look at it... When you look back at the history of it, one of the reasons they did it, this is some years ago, was that zoning boards were tending to grant variances so long as it helped the applicant, and nobody objected. Because, "No, no, that's not what you're supposed to be doing."
It seems reasonable, however.
You have some rules to go by.
I had seen your plot plan and your layout in the back here, but is there any way you can go to the right?
That's what I was wanting to get to.
I mean, with your architect?
Yeah, well, you've got a little more room here, you know.
What is that thing that comes off the side of the house? On the other side?
A porch? Is that a bulkhead?
Is that a stairs?
It's stairs, cement. It's a cement fixture.
Yeah.
There are members and stairs.
So, you know, and then try to wrap it around and not go as deep so that wouldn't be a huge ask on the variance. But, you know, trying to thread the needle there.
Yeah.
It would be major reconstruction.
Yeah. There's a kitchen right in the back.
That's the problem, yeah.
The kitchen is there and a little back hall. And then it's a great big cement structure. So, the easiest way to do it would be off the dining room and...
And where's the dining room? Is that...
Back left.
Right here?
It's right there in the back, yeah.
So, that's the easiest way to do it. I guess my only question is...
Unusually, that's a problem.
When we started the process, why weren't we advised by the people at the town hall?
In the building department?
To go the correct route. I have found Ramonda very helpful, but I have really felt that this whole process has been pretty difficult for the average citizen.
Yeah, so it's...
I don't disagree.
It's... Yeah, I mean, again, it's been a critique for years. But quite honestly, it's in the application. It's a very complex... I'm paraphrasing. It's a complex set of bylaws and rules that we have in the town. And I'm paraphrasing. All applicants are encouraged to seek counsel from a zoning attorney, somebody that's versed in the law before making an application because the building department, I don't think he can... I don't think they say with utter certainty
No, absolutely.
that, yeah, this is, "Okay, you're all set. Just go get a special permit."
Are people advised, though, to... Is that in writing somewhere for the average citizen?
It's in the application.
Yeah, to get a zoning attorney?
No, it's on the application to seek counsel.
Oh, no, you don't have to.
Well, I mean, it's on the application, Phil.
Yeah, exactly.
It's on the application because, to her point, the average citizen gets mired down in legalese that he just recited. Who's Dedrick? What are you talking about? Never heard of him before. So, to your question regarding being advised on how to do this, I'm, you know, I'm thinking that the variance would probably be your parachute here, but...
But you don't know. Sure, absolutely.
Does it meet the criteria of the variance just because of the smaller lot that's pre-existing and nonconform?
And not to defend the necessary... The building inspector. I think they're very good on the pretty much cut-and-dried rules that, you know, that you confront.
Yeah, and I wasn't trying to...
But this case isn't exactly something that's that well-known. I mean, the thing goes on... This is a law case. It goes on for pages and pages. And then way down at the end comes the ruling. Well, yeah, it'd be good to know it, but it's a little bit different. And it didn't used to be the law. So, it's... I'm not saying they shouldn't know it, but it is a... It's a little bit different. But I guess all I'm trying to say is it's a little bit different than missing something that's perfectly obvious in this zoning bylaw that they should have picked up.
So, it's an entirely different application?
Yeah, it would be starting again.
Yeah, and then we could waive fees and everything. We could re-advertise and start over under the heading of a variance.
Yeah, I think we should.
I think the board is probably in favor of what they're trying to do. But I think there's an avenue that has to be taken to get there, basically.
Again, can you ask if anybody's an upset?
But I think Mr. Mulderhill's advice is good. It might be well to talk to counsel possibly.
Yeah, I mean, again, just to get an ear...
It's a little different.
You know? You know, but again, everybody's different. Some people can't cross the street without an attorney, some people will be like, you know, I have to.
I can.
Yeah.
Try to hit them when they cross the street.
I know, I know. Because again, is anybody here? Oh, actually, Tom, I'm sorry, just to see if anybody's here to speak on it.
I actually have two letters in favor of it.
I'm also in favor. I'm an next-door neighbor for a hundred years, wonderful neighbors.
Mrs. Capuccio?
What?
Is your last name Capuccio?
Yes, how did you know?
Oh, you're Joe's mom. It's been a long time.
I am Joe's mom.
Been a long time.
My client of fame.
It's been a long time.
Yeah, I can advise you, but my advice, my suggestion would be, if you withdraw, okay, you withdraw without penalty.
Without prejudice, right, exactly.
Without prejudice, and you would, again, the suggestion would be, consult the attorney to see if there's an avenue for a variance on it. Okay? More than likely, I don't want to tell you what his answer's going to be. Okay, but at that time, you would know. You come back in, we certainly would be willing to waive the fees, because we know you've already paid a lot of money, you know, to get to the point we are at. So we would certainly, you know, be willing to waive the fees on that to come back in in a different fashion, which would be the variance at the time. So, again, I don't want to advise you to do it, but my suggestion would be to withdraw, because if you push it to a vote and it doesn't go, which it won't, then you're banned, then you're banned for two years. So, at that point, and once you consult the attorney, you can come back in immediately with the revisions.
Saying come in immediately, yeah.
Well, you know, pending the availability of the hearing date, but you're not going to have to wait two years.
With the same plot plan that we have, the existing plot plan, or with...
See, that's something you'd have to talk to the attorney about to see if he thinks it's worth coming in to meet the criteria of the variance. As it's been stated a couple of times, the variance is a little more hard to reach the criteria of a variance, but it's, I don't think it's out of the question in this case. But again, you'd have to, we'd have to see what it is at the time.
I'd also talk to your architect to see if there's any other way that you can do anything else that the cost doesn't balloon out of sight.
Yeah, actually, we started thinking about this about ten years ago, and we had an architect...
Yeah.
Draw a plan.
To go out to the side.
That's probably if you could...
But it didn't.
That didn't.
Really.
It was so costly.
Yeah, it does get to a point that it gets, you can't do it, yeah.
We have our contractor here who would be happy to speak in favor of us, but he's not our neighbor, but thank you for coming, Ron.
Anyway, so moving forward, unfortunately, do we have, are you interested in withdrawing to move forward on the other avenue if you choose to do so?
Yeah.
Who are you?
Our builder.
My miller. Oh, I want you to look on track, get on their contract.
All right, sure, you can stand up, please.
Please, please. Mr. Mulverhill mentioned, you know, moving the addition a little bit to the right. Is that a possibility, and how much? How much would he have to move it?
Well...
It's the back setback.
Yeah, it's the back setback there, creating a new nonconformity, as Counselor Riley has said, which is the issue, so if
It's not the side.
Pushed it off to the other side, yeah.
The rear.
It's the rear which opens the Pandora's box.
Yeah.
All right, just checking.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I don't want to hold you always.
All right, I wish you well on that.
So withdraw without prejudice, and then we'll waive the fees. You want to make a motion?
So a motion by Mr. Perry?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mulverhill, do we allow the withdrawal?
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Which is another technicality you have to do, because if you withdraw with prejudice, then you're stuck with not coming back for two years. So you want to make sure it's without prejudice.
Thank you.
All those in favor of that? All right, well, all right, so it defines nothing more. So, yeah.
Sorry, folks.
The suggestion, yeah, I mean, I wanted to work, believe me, I wanted to stay. So I wanted to work out.
Yeah, we'll try and get you there.
You know, I mean, Ramona can maybe help you with that, too.
Yeah.
She's been very helpful.
Right, she is. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
However, couldn't be of more help. I was really hoping the Brookline case was going to help us.
There you go, there you go.
Note thirteen is...
I was hoping you would bring up that.
We're not going to address the issue. Really, fifteen pages of junk and thirteen notes, and they finally say, "We're not going to change Dedrick."
All right, next up is the Moore Street, 153 Moore Street, the fitness facility, please. Case number nineteen ninety.
Hello again.
How are you?
Hello.
How are you doing?
How are you?
Good to see you both. Good to see you both again.
Likewise.
Okay, for the rec, for the record, "Application requests a special permit under section three point one, point F, point ten of the bylaw to allow a fitness facility to open and operate at a property currently located in a manufacturing zone. No exterior construction is needed, nor any additions or alterations to the exterior of the property. Applicant will bring the interior up to code, of course." So, can I just, can I get your, that? Those two and the affidavit, too, if you could, please.
The affidavit. I brought everything that I thought, I, I'm sorry. The, that is...
I need that. You have a car, you don't have a, you're in the car?
I, I can, uh, I don't know. I don't know what that means.
The blank one?
No, I'll go grab it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just, you know, why don't we take five minutes?
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I apologize.
It happens, Dan. Take five minutes.
You're not the first, you won't be the last.
We're going to vote to go into recess in five minutes.
What is he, what are you going to do, the affidavit?
Yeah, can we, do we got a motion to recess for five minutes?
Proceed while he's doing the affidavit, do we?
He's got to go get it.
But, I'm just saying, the notice is probably adequate, isn't it?
I'm sure it is.
So that, I mean, if all we're doing is getting the affidavit, then I would think we could proceed rather than...
Yeah, that's true.
If we even assume that the notice is...
I apologize.
This is just a technicality to fill out at some point, so if I waste five minutes...
So, September twenty-sixth and October third, please, Mr. Riley, Mr. Perry.
I didn't get the glasses on, yeah.
Want me to do it?
I actually have it somewhere.
I have it, ten to twenty-sixth.
Thanks. All right, so we'll go on the assumption that that'll be fine. Yeah, you don't miss your... All right, Dan, if you want to go ahead with your presentation, that'd be fantastic.
You know, I don't have much of a presentation, except to say that I think I want to open up a business, right? I really want this business to be in Norwood, and there's really only two things that I can say about the history of me sitting in this table. One is that I definitely got tunnel vision on the last location, and if I could have it from a thirty-thousand-foot view, I would have seen all the warts that location has. When I was looking for a new property, I did not want to find anything in a manufacturing zone to have to go through this process again. I did find a couple of locations, but nothing was as good for what I need as this property is. And when I looked at it, knowing that it was a manufacturing zone, zoned manufacturing, that I would need to go in front of the hearing, it seemed, from my extensive knowledge, from having done this, as straightforward of a process. It was a clean building, the traffic flow was simple, straightforward, the public safety of pedestrian and parking and traffic, and I have a parking plan for you guys tonight. It seemed, thank you, as straightforward and as clean-cut as having gone through everything before that I could possibly present.
You did much better this time.
I did, I learned something or two.
Thirty-five.
Exactly.
The part of the, as you come in, that there's an area just outside, I mean, the back, they've got that iTunes place, whatever it is.
Right.
Are they going to stripe the front part there?
And I have that planned, I have copies for you for you tonight.
Oh, you did much better this time.
So, that's really it, that, you know, I've been trying to open up this business, I really want to open up in Norwood, and I think I found a spot that would make everybody happy, and hopefully it's straightforward, that's it.
All right, good. Like I said, with that last time, I think it was obvious that the safety issue was the main concern. You know, I mean, so like I told you, and I saw you informally in the hallway, told you I was glad to see that, hopefully, you know, it's a different set of circumstances than this one. Anyways, moving forward, if anybody...
One question, just in an effort to save a little bit of time, are the same general conditions that you talked about at the prior hearing in terms of numbers of employees and hours of operation and all that, will they be the same at this location as they were then?
Correct.
They seem fine, except the location was awful.
Yeah.
But it would be the same, if we were to refer to the other hearing, is to the, same thing would be true here.
Absolutely. It's almost identical square footage, and, and like I said, I definitely got tunnel vision, I got a little entrenched in that, and that's in the past.
How much work needs to be done to the interior?
It's pretty bare bones inside. There are two existing bathrooms that need to be, that I'm, need to bring up to, bring up to code. So I had Mr. Walsh come by at the end of last week, take a look at it. Now, you know, like what you said in the last hearing, he can provide insight, but his word is not, you know, a hundred percent, you know, it's up to a number of things. However, his notes were, you know, the bathroom size is fine, as far as bringing up to an ADA handicap code. I need to bring up, the things that I do know that I need are the emergency lighting inside, including exit signs, the size of the handicap thresholds, doorways. And in order to do any sort of build-out plan, he told me right then and there that I'm, he's going to require a contractor's plan, a certified contractor's plan, in order to even apply for, even to grant a permit. So it's not like I can just apply with, he's going to need to see drawings.
So, Mr. Chair, do we need to put that as conditions of any permit granting that we do here?
I think we should have clearly a copy of the, of a plan the contractor has you submit to, well, like a copy for the file.
But nothing that's out of the realm of your possibility?
No.
It's basically a use issue, right?
Yeah.
That's all it is. I mean, the structure's not changing, other than internally upgrading it, like you said.
Yeah.
So you're going to have shower facilities and lockers down there?
Uh, that might be something later on down the road. In order to operate for what I need, I just need, it's a bare bones industry.
Well, this is kind of what, gentlemen, this is kind of along the lines that, of what we envisioned down there to a degree. I think it falls in...
It's the same stuff you did it before, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Still confusing down there, though.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a very difficult, that's a whole nother...
I think it's about a little...
You don't want to get into that, so.
Yeah.
It'll be until midnight.
Nothing to do.
It's perfect in terms of attracting customers.
Right.
Might have root one. Yeah, I think it's perfect.
Oh, yeah, it is, right, immediately.
What do you got, Murphy, anything?
Nothing, no.
All right, anybody else? Anything from the audience? Motion to close?
Second.
All right, motion to close is seconded by Mr. Murphy. All those in favor? Aye. I have nothing. The pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve pending an application, or, excuse me, a plan from the contractor that you've put with your billing permit?
The real issue is with the building department.
Yeah.
I know.
All right, just make sure we get a copy.
Record.
That's all we ask. If you just have it off to a man, we'll have it. Square it away with him, he'll take care of it. But if you can get a copy of it to register, so we have it for the file, it'd be appreciated. All right, Dan? Pleasure doing business with you.
I think we'll take a vote.
One second, Ramonda's saying that she needs the plan within two weeks. How quickly can you get that plan?
Within two weeks.
Yeah, good. Good?
It's probably an easy plan to do.
Right, it does need to be written in, and all that. She has to write the thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, now you have it, so, given the fact that we will have a copy of this plan within two weeks, we will give a vote on it.
I'll second Mr. Mulverhill's motion.
And again, don't delay, because she has to write the minutes and has to write the decision.
Fourteen days to do the writing, so that's why you need the plan.
Get on that right away.
Okay.
Because you don't want any delays.
Walsh will work with you, so he's doing good.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll be fine with it.
So whoever's doing it, who is your contractor? Is he a local guy?
Yes.
Just have him speak to Matt, have him stay in contact with this young lady here and...
Right over.
Who owned that building?
Oh, I think it was the seventies. I'm not, off the top of my head, I don't know.
Off the vine?
Off the vine is the back location. It's probably built at the same time.
Okay. Nice, who owned it, I was wondering.
Oh, oh, pardon me, off the vine.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor to approve the permit pending a plan of record to be submitted within fourteen days. All those in favor? Aye. All right, five, nothing. Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Perseverance?
Bye, Dan.
Thank you.
You'll do fine.
Why are you looking forward to it? Are you going to go there and exercise?
We could all use it. I think we could all use it. You might have five new members here, too, we could all use it.
His answer would be, "You guys couldn't handle that, were you?"
Sure, that's true, too. All right, two-twenty Sunnyside Road. Who brought their bodyguard with them tonight?
I did, it's my mother.
Oh, yeah?
Yes.
You know how nervous she makes people when she walks into a room?
That's why I brought her.
Very intimidating.
My husband is not as intimidating, so...
Yeah, I can vouch for that.
For the record, we love you, Mom.
I do, too, but I have to.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, "This application requests a special permit under section five point four point three of the zoning bylaw to allow to install a bedroom slash kitchen addition off the rear of the existing structure. The addition meets all setback requirements, but adds four hundred and twenty-seven feet, I assume that's square feet of living space, to a nine hundred and eighty-four square foot house, or, in other words, a forty-four percent increase, which only twenty-five percent is allowed by right. The existing structure has a current side yard issue." So, if...
No, that's a, that's a...
Yeah, you have yours, please.
Two of them.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so there's September twelfth, a nice mug shot on there, Murf. And September nineteenth, please. Yeah, I think I know her.
I have September twelfth.
September nineteenth, sir.
Thank you. Ramona.
Did he give you that? Did he give you the affidavit?
Yeah, he did.
Just wanted to make sure I didn't forgot about it. Okay, Jen?
Yes.
If you could just introduce yourself and please tell us what you got.
My name is Jen Murphy Conley, and I live at two-twenty Sunnyside Road. We're looking to expand an addition, first floor addition off the back of our house, expanding our kitchen and adding a first floor master bedroom, master bath.
Okay. And now, what was the, you said there's a side issue, just on the side lot, or is it...
Actually, it's the existing garage, when we purchased the house.
Yeah.
I wasn't aware that there was an issue with the setback, I think, on that side.
This is the, it's the thirteen and a half? No, the side garage is on the side, so it's four feet. Oh, four feet, but it's existing, all right.
Yes, and we're not looking to build on that side.
Right, and going off the back, it looks like it should be... Is there any discrepancies on the back or am I...
No, you're not creating any new, not creating any new improvement or...
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
You actually would have the same problem that we had in the second case because of the thirteen point five on the side, except for two things. One, they have a, an asterisk indicating that the building height will not exceed fifteen feet, within fifteen feet of the, and that being case, all they need is ten feet.
Right.
But even if they needed the thirteen five, they could probably get a variance because of the shape of the property.
Correct. Correct.
Because the line goes at an angle.
Right.
Yeah, really.
She could probably run either way.
Okay.
Fortunately, the other people couldn't, but she could do it either way.
So any questions on the board? Mr. Riley first?
No, I.
Jack, you good? Very good.
I don't see any problem with that.
Jack?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, anything from the audience? You, madam, I would never leave you out. Okay, you're in favor of it?
Absolutely.
Jenny, where's two twenty? Where are you on Sunnyside? Is that towards Meadowbrook or?
Between Birch and Hillside.
Yeah, you're right.
From the left, as you go.
Yeah, I didn't realize, I didn't realize that Sunnybrook was a split road.
Yeah.
Sunny Side.
When I went to look at it.
They have the little brick that goes through.
I went down and then off to the left, and it went, like, I don't know, fifty-six, and the road ended, you know, in a big, and I thought, what the heck, where is two twenty?
Happens more often than not.
Then I looked at the map. I had the map, and I thought, oh, it's a split road, it's the other way.
They call GPS. Put it on your phone.
I could have.
All right, so do I have a motion to close?
I thought I knew the town.
Second move is seconded by Jack. All those in favor?
Hi.
Five, nothing, and the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve the application?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Riley. All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, five, nothing. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
You good? Tell me again?
Yep.
Easy.
You're going to go back up to, Mom's House, while the construction's going on?
Absolutely.
Ah, she loves to have you.
Not with the other tenants.